In the Nase de Interpretación, en la parte baja inferior de la pantalla. Gracias.
And with that, I will call the meeting to order. Let's see, Mr. Conway, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I will.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty for all.
And justice for all. Okay, we'll start with public participation. Dr. White and Dr. Joyner?
Yep, I'm all set. Dr. Joyner, are you ready? Uh, Dr. Joyner, you're muted.
As soon as you announce the name, will the speaker start? Because I really start my timing um when you announce the name.
Okay. Our first speaker this evening is Jessica Domotor. Mr. Moda.
Sorry, I didn't see the unmute button. Hi, I'm here. Uh, hi, my name is Jessica Domotor, and I'm the school counselor at high school in the community. I'm here again to make sure that it's still on everyone's radar, that today was our 20th day back in school for in-person learning, and that we still don't have a school nurse. We have not had a nurse in the building, one since we have returned. In previous years, we had a nurse one or two days a week, last year specifically, two days a week. Now, during the pandemic, we don't have access to one at all. This is affecting students, staff, and teachers alike. This is a public health issue and a safety issue. We trusted the NHPS administrative team when we were told at the beginning of the school year for our eventual return, that all schools would have a nurse as promised. We were let down, and we still do not have a nurse, not even a part-time one. It is essential that we have one assigned to our building, even in a limited capacity, as soon as possible. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Abraham Hernandez.
Can you hear me there?
Yes, we can.
Um, Abraham Hernandez, resident of 28 United Water Street, New Haven, Connecticut. They're members in the Haven Board of Education and Superintendent uh of schools, Dr. Tracy. I would like to respectfully address the members of our city's Board of Education and Superintendent regarding our need to take significant strides to improve the services our ESL students are in dire need of. It is an issue of great concern because the increasing trend of students of this population doesn't seem to be decreasing, yet the achievement gap of these students is ever increasing. It is understood and well documented that students on district are not afforded sufficient bilingual support. And the following information corroborates this where in Hill Central, we have bilingual support from K to three, Truman from K to six, Furhaven from K to eight. Even though they're phrasing in the dual program, Clemente only provides support but isn't a full-fledged bilingual program. John Daniels is a dual-language school, and John Martinez provides bilingual program but only to, from K to three. As is evident in these scenarios, kids who need continued bilingual support will need to transfer to other schools and get acquainted to a totally new setting. And if they have siblings, they face the possibility of being separated from them because of their dominant language. To speak on this challenge, our districts facing, I'd like to share some details as to a gem that we have in the district that can make a significant impact in addressing the shortfall. It's the Obama Magnet University School, for which I and many community leaders vouch for and strongly encourage our New Haven Alderman to include $10 million in our city budget to build the school with the goal in mind of addressing the pressing need to develop certified bilingual teachers. I, as the Chair of the NHL, NHLC Education Committee, believe this is the time for us to expeditiously take advantage and cultivate the partnership with Southern Connecticut State University that we who tirelessly advocated for the construction of the Barack Obama Magnet School envisioned as a bilingual lab school. From day one, the Aldermanic Board of Ed members were convinced that SCSU School of Education would become the much-needed pipeline and breeding ground that would address the shortage of bilingual teachers, and that it will go a very long way in raising the standards for bilingual students that comprises 70% of our district population.
You can finish your sentence, uh, Robert Hernandez.
If you, if I got five seconds, I'll wrap it up. For this, we strongly urge the board and administration in their pursuit to hire the new principal for the Barack Obama Magnet School, they do so by selecting a principal that has bilingual experience. And in addition to that, that some of those that will be involved in the interview process are also culturally responsive. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dr. Carlos Torre. Dr. Torre, you may speak.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Uh huh.
Okay, well, I have a, I have a prepared statement here, which I've already sent to the board. But interestingly, after I sent this the main question was answered, and I have I have a, just a brief question at the end, but basically it says, Dear members of the New Haven Board of Education and Superintendent Tracy, it is with much respect and gratitude that I address the members of the New Haven Board uh of education to ask simply, when can we expect that the principalship of Barack Obama University School be posted? And the search and screen process begin? As you know, upon the, upon examination of the magnet plan with the Connecticut State Department of Education, it reveals that the Obama School was established as a dual-language lab school at Southern Connecticut State University. Therefore, we need a leader at that school who has a deliberate plan to recruit families and shore up enrollment at that school. Someone to bring the target population to the table at which decisions about recruitment, choice, and enrollment are made. Someone who can speak to families in their language and explain the remarkable opportunities for their kids at that school in a dual-language pathway. Someone who can ensure that the recruitment is not blind to the cultural and linguistic needs of students and families, so that enrollment supports sound programming and instruction. As I, as I asked the New Haven Board of Education and Superintendent Tracy, as well as the rest of the administration, continue to recognize, is that a 10-minute or 5-minute or a second? Okay.
You can finish your sentence, uh, Dr. Torre.
To finish my sentence?
You can finish, yes.
Okay, well, then, there's much more, but like I said, it has been sent in. However, let me, let me just reiterate by saying, when can we expect that the principalship of the Barack, uh, Barack Obama Magnet's University School be posted in the search and screen process to begin? However, the new information that has come to hand since I submitted that earlier this afternoon is that the process
Point of order.
Yet it was never posted.
Point of order.
Okay, hold on. My last, my last statement is
Madam President, point of order.
What's going on?
Mr. Bolton.
That's my last question. What's going on? To quote Marvin Gaye.
Thank you, Dr. Torre.
Madam President.
Go ahead.
We have rules that we've been, we have rules that we're supposed to follow. Uh, we've cut off people plenty of times. Today, we allow two people to go overtime. I've advocated for a long time to extend the speaking time to allow people more time. And today is just proof that there, there are some people that are allowed that and other people that are not. And I would, I would advocate that we either extend the time for everyone or use the same rules for everyone. Thank you, Madam President.
Your point of order is well taken, Mr. Bolton. Dr. Joyner?
Actually, at, at the two-minute mark, I told everybody time. And so I'm gonna do that for everybody, regardless to who the speaker is. It's up to the person to stop. And, and, and I would argue that it's up to the chair at some point to say that, you know, they have to stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Dr. White?
Our next speaker is listed as Kirsten. Please state your full name. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
It's Kirsten Hope McFadden. Good evening. I can't, I'm looking forward to hear the lively discussion I'm sure will ensue with regard to unpaid, appointed, and elected board members returning to in-person meetings. But I'm here today to further discuss my ADA claim that was unilaterally and arbitrarily ended on April 26. I was told in an email, please be advised while your application is pending, you are expected to return to work on April 26, 2021, which is against medical advice. Then I received another email. Um, and I'll just read the end of it, saying you are encouraged to contact your union where applicable and/or your supervisor for additional guidance and support with obtaining an accommodation. Then a parent complained that I was not holding class, to which I responded to my administrator that I was taking sick days. This is my ninth sick day that I've had to take because I will, I am not allowed to teach remotely. And she replied, I forgot that you are taking sick days, as you should be. The same substitute is in your class. Unfortunately, if you're asking me, I cannot advise you to teach tomorrow. Even if your class has a substitute teacher, it is HR that must decide ADA accommodations. Just clarifying, because I know there's been some misleading information regarding this. I ask that teachers who have pending ADA classes be allowed to continue to teach remotely as we have this whole school year. The argument that coverage can't be obtained is a fallacy as there must be the very same coverage for sick days as there is for remote. However, it's the students who will suffer when they don't have a certified teacher to teach them. I am asking that this question be looked into immediately as we are at the end of the school year. I am perfectly capable of teaching remotely. I just want to enter a building that where the air circulation system has been broken for several days. Thank you.
Madam President, that concludes the hands that are raised at this point.
Thank you, Dr. White. Okay, so we'll move on to the action items, and the first being the approval of the board meeting minutes of April 26. Is there a motion to accept the minutes, Mr. Conway? You're, you're muted.
I moved that the minutes of April 26 be accepted.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner.
Second motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Conway?
I just want to say that the format that um the reporting secretary has set forth was, was very easily. And the minutes were much clearer to, to read, and Dr. Joyner did tell us to get some uh any corrections into her beforehand, and that seemed to have worked well. So I just wanted to just, you know, commend her on a job of, well done on the format of the uh of the minutes.
Great, thank you. Mr. Conway, Dr. Joyner?
I'd also like to inform the board that I had two extensive conversations with Ms. Mason, and um she's, she's very capable and cooperative, and I really enjoyed the conversation. And I'm sure that we will continue to, to get really high quality of minutes. And thank you, Mr. Conway, for your support.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Mr. Wilcox, you had your hand up earlier. Was that the second emotion, or?
That was just the second emotion.
Okay. Mr. Bolton?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to have to abstain from this item. I am not at home. I haven't had a chance to review the minutes, so um I'm just, I, I take everybody's word that they're in much better shape. I just haven't had a chance to review myself, so I'm gonna abstain. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Bolton. Okay, seeing no further discussion, we'll vote on accepting the minutes of April 26. Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Mr. Bolton is abstaining?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
And the students are not in, right, Dr. White? And they're not in the waiting room? Okay. Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
And I am a yes, and so the minutes pass. Next item is the personnel report. Dr. Tracy?
Madam President, point of order. Thank you. I noticed that we have um our attorney um on the line here, and um if he's going to speak out of the agenda item tonight, I would, I would respectfully request move it up on the agenda, so we don't have to pay those hourly fees while he sits here and listens to us pontificate. So um I would respectfully request that if he's here for an item, that we move that up on the agenda. Thank you, Madam President.
Actually, and I should have mentioned this as we started the meeting, because Elia is not able to attend the meeting tonight because he's traveling, I asked Dr. Attorney Mooney to attend the meeting as parliamentarian and also to help us discuss one of the items on the agenda.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Conway?
Um, we still have to approve the minutes of March 22 as well. Were we gonna do that? Is that on the agenda, or are we gonna wait till a later date to do that?
So I There are two minutes in the packet. Yeah, we do have the minutes in the packet for the 20, what is it, the 20?
The 22nd of March.
Yeah, it's just what, it wasn't listed on the agenda as an approval, approval item, so I'm guessing we would have to make a motion to add it? Mr. Wilcox?
Uh, the other seven minutes that were included on our packet, at least my packet, was the April 12th, not the March 22nd. So we don't, if there were corrections to them to be presented for us to vote on, we haven't seen them in this, this week's packet.
In this packet, you're correct, Mr. Wilcox, and that's what I have as well, April 12. Mr. Conway?
Madam President, that could wait till, we could just, if we could just put the both of those, those, because they're not on the agenda, we should just make sure that we get those minutes passed, because I do believe they're corrected.
That is correct. Thank you, Mr. Conway. Okay, so we'll move on. Dr. Tracy, to your personnel report.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam President. Good evening, board. Good evening, everyone who may be listening. I present to you the personal report and ask that you accept the personal report before I make any further comments on the personal report. We have promotional appointments, a promotional appointment, and a transfer.
So most, Mr. Wilcox?
I move we approve the personnel report.
Sir, second, Dr. Joyner?
Second.
Dr. Joyner, thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Bolton, is that raised hand from before, or?
No, I just raised it. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I'm, I'm looking at um, at these, at the personnel, I just have a quick question. Um, under the transfers, those are already principals transferring to other schools, is that correct? They're not promotions, okay. They're just lateral transfers?
Exactly, yeah.
All right, and the, the one regarding Columbus Family Academy, that is a promotion, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bolton. Dr. Jackson?
Um, the transfer administrators, I just want, just so the public is clear that these, these schools were shuttered. So they're moving from no school to a school, so people don't think that, you know, there, because some people may not remember that those schools were shuttered. So they're going to another school, and we're not leaving positions open. I just wanted to say that point.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Okay, seeing no further discussion, we'll vote up. Mr. Conway? You're muted, you're muted.
Thank you, and I just want to recognize three retirees that I've worked with. Karen Bonano, Ronald Rosario, the security guard, and Mildred Mayberry. I've worked with all those individuals, and I just want to just, just say congratulations to each and one. I want to say congratulations to all the retirees, but I want to specifically say congratulations to those because I did have personal experience with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Mr. Bolton?
Madam President, I do actually have one more question about the new principal at Columbus Family Academy. Was that person already the assistant principal there, or was she brought from another school?
That person was the assistant principal. We moved her when we needed an assistant principal to support Clemente school when we brought on Mia Duff. So instead of having two Spanish-speaking individuals in one school, we needed support at the other school. We brought her over there to support that school.
All right, so she is moving from, from, what school did you say again? I'm sorry.
She was assistant principal at Columbus Family Academy.
Oh, she was?
Yes, before we moved her to support Mia Duff, to make sure there's a bilingual component there. Bilingual administrator supporting Clemente School. And so she's worked with Clemente as assistant principal, and so we're, we've promoted her to principalship.
So is there a slot opening at Clemente now that she's moving over?
That's correct, and we have plans to replace it.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Bolton. Dr. Tracy?
Okay, let me say, did you finish? You fin, did you, did you vote on it?
No, not yet. Hold on. See, no, I was just looking. See, no further discussion. We're on the personnel reports. Uh, Mr. Bolton?
Yes.
Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
And I am a yes, and so personnel report passes. Um, we'll move on to the amended finance and operations calendar.
Before you go, Madam President, I need to say something more. I just wanted it to pass first.
Go ahead.
Um, so I, I want to say congratulations to Marisol Rodriguez for her dedication to New Haven Public Schools. Um, Marisol worked at Christopher Columbus School, Strong School, Fairhaven Middle, and she's a proud graduate of high school in the community. So there we go with Marisol. Um, she has 25 years of experience as an educator in Connecticut. She began her teaching career in Hartford Public Schools, where she taught for four years before joining New Haven Public Schools. Marisol has credentials in bilingual education, and she is a great fit for Columbus Family Academy. The SPNT was heavily involved, and they also see her, I would say majority saw her as a fit for their school. So it was a decision when it came back up to my level that the team and I looked at that, and this is the person we see to leave Columbus Family Academy. The other two individuals are, as I think Mr. Bolton asked about, or Dr., was Dr. MacArthur. These were our two principals who are displaced, also that are being placed to run these schools. And we wanted to close the loop so that they can get time enough to get acclimated um in these schools before the school year comes to a close. So this is where we are with that. Um, can I bring on Ms. um Rodriguez? The other two principals are principals we know, so I'm just gonna bring on Ms. Rodriguez.
She's on, yeah.
Oh, there's Marisol. Hi, Marisol.
Hi, Dr. Tracy. Good evening, everyone. Um, I just want to thank Dr. Tracy and the Board of Ed for a gift, allowing me the opportunity to become the principal at Columbus Family Academy. Like Dr. Tracy mentioned, I am a proud graduate of New Haven Public Schools. Um, few people know that I was a student at Columbus School many, many, many years ago. And I am a resident of Fur, um, New Haven, living in the Furhaven area. One of the advantages that I found this year during the pandemic was that being a resident of Furhaven, I was actually able to knock at my students' doors and literally deliver what they needed. So I just found that as a benefit. Um, so I'm excited to take on this new role. And as one teacher sent me a message on Friday from Columbus saying, you're coming home, and that's how I feel. I'm coming home where it all began for me.
Thank you, Marisol.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. We appreciate the work you have done for New Haven Public School students and families. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone. I'm excited.
Can I say something?
Yes, yes, Dr. Jackson.
I just want to say, um, Principal Rodriguez, I'm working with the committee to rename the school, and all they talk about, what's so beating is family. And even the students, they, they, this family thing, so it's so great to see someone going back who they have referred to as family, because it, that's a big piece there. So, welcome home. I'm glad that you're there.
Yes, I'm excited. I'm really excited.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Mr. Bolton, is that from before, or?
No, thank you, Madam President. Um, I've actually, I'm a little confused. Are we still calling this school Columbus, or are we, what are we doing with that now? I know that we, we passed the resolution that said no longer call it Columbus, so I'm trying to figure out what exactly we're doing now.
Should be Family Academy at the moment, until it's renamed.
Until the name is changed, technically.
It's all formerly known as.
Like, like, friends. Right, okay. But, 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 but all do, you know, I mean, it's, it's cute and everything, but um I don't know how long it's gonna take for us to actually change this name, and we should, we should make a decision what we're calling it in the interim, if we're still calling it Columbus, or we're calling it Family Academy, or whatever we're doing, we should have some kind of official deal around it, because I, I think I do remember that we said it was no longer going to be called Columbus, but we didn't give it another name. Uh, so I'd like to know what we're doing about that. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Bolton.
So we need to have an official name before we start the school year, so the school can start on with its brand-new name. So that's an important piece.
Report on that. Madam Chair.
Okay.
Something really quickly. Um, we have, there's a, they, we do have a committee, and they have a timeline per the policy, and they are working on that timeline. So the goal and the belief with our timelines is that the school will have a new name by the time they reopen. So if we decide to call the school formally named or Family Academy, you know, whichever. But honestly, we know the school is not called Christopher Columbus, but I think for the sake of the children, you know, they still call it that. So, you know, it is what it is. Whatever we call it, it's gonna be changed by September.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Okay. Uh, moving on to the amended finance and operations calendar.
Uh, Madam President, if I may.
Sure.
Uh, and this is very brief. We had to change two dates on our calendar. I'll direct your attention to uh, the date changes were to have a meeting on Tuesday, July 6th, because of the making a move in honor of Independence Day. And also moving a meeting that we originally had scheduled for Wednesday, September 8th, putting it back on Tuesday, September 7th. So those are the only two changes. And I move that we accept these or amend our finance and operation meeting calendar.
Sir, a second? Mr. Conway? You're muted.
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote on the FNO operations calendar. Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Mr. Bolton?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, and so the FNO amended calendar passes. Uh, now for the governance amended calendar.
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
We, we will be following, we were out of line the same dates as FNO. I am not as precise in knowing the same dates as Matt, but our dates were off and they were fixed and that's why we need approval also.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Are you moving that we approve the amended calendar?
Yes, I'm moving that we amend the calendar to fix the dates.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Dr. Joyner?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote on the amended governance calendar. Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Mr. Galton?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well, and so the governance amended calendar passes. Finance and Operations Committee, Mr. Wilcox?
Thank you, Madam President. I have before you, as you know, our minutes from the meeting are in the packet and posted on the website. It also includes, there was three information-only items, but tonight I have for you a motion that we approve the three abstracts, six agreements, and four contracts that the Finance and Operations Committee recommends approval of.
Is there a second? Dr. Joyner?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Galton?
Thank you, Madam President. I guess this should be noted that one item has been held back from the committee for additional review and that is the tendley investigation contract. I can note that for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Galton.
I'll just mention that it is, yeah, it's held back to the next meeting and it will be a discussion item. And if anybody has any comments or questions, please get them to the committee and to Dr. Tracy so we can make sure that staff have the answers ready for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Okay, seeing no further discussion, Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Mr. Galton?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, so FNO items pass. Superintendent's report, Dr. Tracy?
Thank you very much, and I won't take up a lot of the time of the board, but just by way of announcement, I have some good news from the state of Connecticut. Today, we had a meeting with all the superintendents across Connecticut and we were told that we were given the parameters now on how we should be spending the, I think we're getting up to $95 million from the state, which is based on the baseline of our Title I Part A funding. And so that's good news. We, since we're given the parameters, now we can start planning. It will be involving public participation all the way through and every six months when we review the plan, again, public participation. And so we have a lot of work. We will have 90 days to complete and sending this plan to the State Department of Education, which is actually what they refer to as almost a continuation of ESRT2 enhanced. An enhanced version of ESRT2. So we're happy New Haven is getting more funds in its coffers along with other funds that we are privy to get when we write these grants. So Lauren is working herself away to, for other grant opportunities that we're getting in New Haven. We don't want to get too much that we don't know how to spend it or have people to manage all this grant. I must say also, Evie was instrumental in working on a workforce grant, which is part of the earmark grants through Rosa Delora's office. We'll be hearing more about that as we go through that process. Having said that, we are in the midst of our SBA testing, which people call SBAC testing. We are going towards the finish lines. We are testing students both remotely and in person. And so that's going on right now. Ms. Michelle Sherbin will say a few words about that. We also have a discussion on increased community access to testing for students, which I have shared with board members. We have Ms. Evie Velezquez is going to talk about unfinished learning, although learning is never finished. This age and I continue to learn and the more I learn, the more I realize I don't know. So learning is continuous cycle. We also have the summer school planning update. You have about four individuals who will be giving an update as to where we are with summer school planning, what to expect. So let me start with Dr. Sherbin a few minutes. Just say what is going on with SBA testing, Dr. Michelle Sherbin. There, I don't think there's a handout. She's just going to say what she needs to say very quickly.
Good evening, everyone. Just to update you on the Smarter Balance and the NGSS, which is the science testing. We are in the midst of testing right now. The window will be open until June 4th. We are testing both students in person and remotely for the ELA, English Language Arts and Math. Our third through eighth grade students are participating in the Smarter Balanced or the Alternate Assessment. And for the science, grades five, eight, and 11 are participating in either the Next Generation Science Assessment or the Connecticut Alternate Science Assessment. The difference for the students who are remaining remote is that those alternate assessments do not have a remote component, so those students would not be tested. Additionally, the students who are testing remotely are required to have their cameras on the entire time during testing and they do need to have that secure browser on their device. And the schools are working with parents and students to make sure that they have access to all of the testing.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sherbin. The federal government, along with the State Department of Education, have selected New Haven Public Schools and Waterbury Public Schools as two major school systems to receive free student testing, which is called increased access or increased community access to testing. We, among the 50 states, 50 schools were selected and we are among the 50 schools that were selected to carry out this type of testing. Of course, it requires parental permission and of course, it's a version that we need, it's not the quick testing. It's the one that we'll have turn around in the next day to hear the report of this. Dr. Paul White will say something about that very quickly. Dr. White?
Good evening, board members. So this program would allow for testing in our schools so that families and students do not have to go offsite to get testing. It would return the results in 24 hours. That way, if there's an issue or we know we have the testing quicker than having to have a delay in that from an outside test getting it reported back into district. This is only by consent only, obviously, and then the families would be tested. Those students would be tested once a week. It's a short pilot that this will be going on and we hope that they will have funding to extend this for the summer. We'd really like to have this as part of our summer school programming that the testing would be available at our sites, obviously, as students are going to be in a variety of activities so that we can help them maintain safety throughout this. And the permission slips will go out, those that volunteer. This is also, students and staff would be entitled to the weekly testing. It's the PCR testing and it's the lower nasal. So this is not the brain tickler for those who frequently had the test. This is the one that's the lower part of the nose, so it's a lot easier for, particularly for students to tolerate that. And we're going to be proceeding with that and information will be going out to the schools that will be part of this.
Thank you, Dr. White. Dr. Tracy?
Okay, next is Ms. Velezquez. Evie, unfinished learning. Spend a few minutes on that for me, unfinished learning.
Thank you. Let me go ahead and share. Good evening, Madam President and members of the board. I'm hoping you can see my slides, yes?
Yep.
So our theme, unfinished learning. The reason I'm using this term is because as we have more and more students come in, it's going to be really important to us that we use an acid space approach. And that means when every student comes in, that we assess where they are, meet them where they are, and then accelerate learning as opposed to looking at them as if they're missing something or somehow they are in any way broken. We want to make sure that the rhetoric that we hear out there isn't influencing us to look at a deficit approach. And so this is a really important theme for us. So we landed on unfinished learning. This is how our academic team is talking about this. It's how every teacher is preparing to meet kids where they are. I'm not going to go through all the slides here, but Dr. Tracy made sure that our presentation was founded on the core values and the strategic plan. So this slide here tells you that as we're having this conversation about preparing for the students and planning for next year, that it is equitable outcomes, that we continue to talk about high expectations, a culture of continuous improvement and collaboration. In academic office, there's three priorities in the strategic plan that we really touch. These are all the items that are on the strategic plan. I won't talk about all of them. I'm going to just highlight some of the things that we've been doing this year that also get us ready to, again, meet kids where they are. So we're emphasizing standards-based curriculum. This is something that, of course, the standards, the NGSS standards, the social studies standards that have very engaging content, rich content, we're drawing from those now in curriculum and making sure that we know what kids need to master in order to be more effective in curriculum. So we're looking at how we write curriculum, making sure it's more engaging at every level. We're right now in teaching and learning. We will be bringing the grading policy there. We have a work group that's looking at that. There's never been a better time to look at that since we know recently we reviewed grades and because of students not being engaged and turning things in, we know that our policy right now isn't supportive of students who have gone through COVID. So you'll be hearing more about that. Early childhood continues to be an emphasis because we want to make sure that students coming up through the grades are taking, are really being supported at the earliest levels with literacy. In equity and excellence, you hear me talk a lot about this. Of course, the policy that was done with the Governance Committee and that we continue to revisit in teaching and learning has really driven what we've done for professional learning across the district. Culturally relevant pedagogy is something that in our second year of implementation of the policy will have a new emphasis. We want to get to culturally relevant pedagogy because it is looking precisely at the relationship between student and teacher and what happens at the most critical times when students are engaged in something that is meaningful to them, that is embedded in the world they live in, that is important to them because it's impacting their families in New Haven. You'll see that we'll be talking about project-based learning. And this is about high engagement, really talking to students about projects and problems that are in, that come right out of the news, right? Things that are important to them that they see are relevant. So those are a big emphasis and now in curriculum. And then in professional development, we're looking at multimoda, right? Last year, we went online with Linkspring. We also looked at different platforms to ensure that PD was not only just one size fits all, but really was engaging of all people in the district, regardless of what function you play. This is, I'm sharing this slide just to say that our big emphasis again in curriculum is this idea of project-based learning. There's a lot of images here. And the reason we use this slide to represent what we're doing in curriculum is that there's a lot of things that in the past have been done in silo and we're trying to pull them together to benefit students, right? You see those images of students engaged in hands-on, outside, solving problems, asking questions. That's where we want the curriculum to go across the board, pre-K to 12. This year, we started with a pre-K 5 emphasis, but we're going to roll that up into 6-8 and then also look at the high school level. The data that right now we are most, what we're scrutinizing is this idea of attendance and also chronic absenteeism because, again, we cannot teach them if they're not engaged. We cannot teach them if they're not interested in what we're putting out there for them, right? What we're using to engage them. And so we're paying very close attention to these numbers and hope that through the work that each teacher does, pulling kids in, that interest and high-cut interest, or rather, rich content in the curriculum will make a difference. We have planned this idea that we need to get to know every student better. And so we're planning a dashboard project in which we could see every child and look at all of their stats, right? Not only academic, but how is their attendance? How are their social, emotional learning? How is that going? How is discipline with them? What is the parent saying about them? We're going to try to take an approach that is supported by technology. So this will be a big project for us that will really help us understand what kids need and let us be more responsive. So I started to talk a little bit about like the ideas we have this spring, but really, this is the big deal here, right? We need to know what each student knows. We need to evaluate that. We need to be on solid ground about that. I'm going to move through pretty quickly here just to tell you. These are slides that we're using now to talk to every principal, every administrator, every teacher. This idea that the best thing that we know about how kids learn is that we need to connect new knowledge to existing schema, right? That our kids come to us and they're fully formed. They have the ideas, they have all the background knowledge. Sometimes students, yes, have had traumatic experiences, but they draw on everything that has happened to them in order to make sense of something new. And we don't want to forget that as educators. So this is a big idea for us. The next thing is that every child, we are going to collect information across these five domains. Our reading assessments, our math, science, writing samples, and then authentic assessments about artistic expression. That one is there because we need to understand what kids truly see for themselves. What do they love and enjoy and how do they see themselves as successful? In the reading area, we will, we want every student, every teacher to sit with students and listen to them read. That is the most authentic way to understand where they are with their reading, to have discourse about what they're reading and comprehension and vocabulary. In math, we don't want just the math facts. We're looking for a high level of content around problem solving. In science, we want to use inquiry, which we know that research tells us when you put a problem in front of students and you work with them to understand the science behind the solution, that we will have better results. We have assessments that are available through NGSS. Of course, a few years ago, this became the new standard in science. And so we're training teachers about what are the tests available now that you can use to practice for that assessment? Writing samples, I'll just say this, that there is no better way to understand comprehension, vocabulary development, and their ability to have discourse than to have them write day in and day out. And so we're going to be collecting and analyzing writing samples. Yeah, and then again, to remember that. Yeah, and then again, to remember that while there are some areas of the content we're going to emphasize, it's all those other areas where kids really let us know what they love and what they're passionate about. All right, I am going to go quickly through this. Just to let you know, we we have been doing some formal training again for administrators and we will be pushing this out to teachers. One of the biggest things that we're doing for next year is requiring that every school has what we call an enrichment block. And it's a block where students will be in homogeneous groups, either three to six students, if it's an intervention, meaning that it's additional instruction in reading or mathematics, or if it's an extra, an extra session doing some STEM or some coding or some some music, right? That we will actually have a block of time in every school's schedule where we will be able to do small group instructions. And this is important because it's the only way that we will actually be able to do the targeted teaching that we'll need to to again, meet students where they are. Right? We're going to be talking about how to use data to make decisions. We're going to be doing something called progress honoring, meaning that every school will be getting a calendar, which we call a progress monitoring calendar. And the entire district every six weeks will be looking and analyzing things like writing samples to decide how are we doing, how close to the mark are we, and then to adjust. This seems like, you know, this might seem like, isn't this standard practice? Well, in fact, we know that while this works, we don't have this systematically happening across the schools. And so executive team and and the superintendent have been really working to get administrators to plan now so that we are very systematic about this in the new, in the new school year. Of course, we will be doing professional learning. We're going to be very deliberate in setting up a year long calendar of professional learning so that the concepts that I've been sharing here today, we're able to study those things and support teachers. And then finally, I'd say that we we need to make sure that on a regular basis, on a quarterly basis, we actually, you know, evaluate what we've done and then come back to you and explain precisely the the gains that we've made and then the places where it's been difficult. Because I think in a system, if a system's going to work, we're all holding each other accountable and really talking about what's really important, which is how are kids learning? That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Valesquez. And now the final one is, and I'm sure the board has questions we asked at the end. Summer school planning update. I must say, these folks have been working very, very hard to make summer school meaningful for our students. So we will start with, I don't know how you're doing Gemma. Gemma, you're doing the overview, whoever it is, just start out.
Yes, Keisha is going to give us an overview on the ESSR spending around summer programming. I think is the best way to start and then we'll continue from there.
And by the way, let me interject, as you mentioned, ESSR to the board. The State Department has approved our ESSR application, so that's good news. All right, so now you can talk about your ESSR.
All right, so good, good evening, everyone. And it's always a pleasure to come before you, to speak to you, and especially about something exciting as this, right? This is something we all can grab hold of, we can enjoy, because this is why we do what we do, to provide opportunities for our students, for our families to enhance and enrich their their learning. And so we embarked upon ESSR two with the understanding that we wanted to reengage our students back into the learning process in a fun, in a fun way. And so how we decided to utilize those funds was to tap into the wonderful resources we have within our community. As you know, New Haven is rich with many organizations that want to do well by our students and partner with all of us. And so it's been our charge over this last few months to figure out how can we engage our partners to provide robust planning, planning for our students? And we're excited to present to you what the plan looks like for everyone to see and hear about it. I have to just shout out our our youth, family and community engagement office. They've been doing a a great job in tying this all together for us. We have our summer school planning teams as well that are also putting things together. So I will turn it over to Gemma, but what you will see and what you need to know, right? We're expanding our own summer school opportunities for our K eight populations as well as our nine twelve populations. And we'll have Evie talk a little bit about how the partnership works and how we were able to expand with our youth and recreation department. And then we're also looking at our credit retrieval program in our high schools, those offerings for our students, but also summer camps that our high schools are putting together. So I'll turn it over right now to Gemma to set the stage and tell us where we're going next.
We're about lifting up our families and getting them excited. It's been a tough year. We've all done our best, but at the end of the day, we as a school district are excited to say to our families that 2021 is truly going to be a summer of fun where we are going to offer experiences that we have never offered before. We're going to go places where we've never been before. And I know it took that straight from Star Trek, but we really are going to do that. And you're going to see as we continue through this plan today, how we plan to make sure that everyone, this is a tier one activity, tier one means every child, every family, we are looking to connect to learning this summer. So Evie, do you want to talk a little bit about the this expansion and what those sites might look like and the time?
Sure, absolutely. So this summer, we are really lucky to be partnering with the Parks and Rec Department. Instead of having a morning program at six sites, we will be having a morning and afternoon, either eight to four or nine to five at 12 different sites. We will have more of an academic program in the morning and then Parks and Rec, nothing but fun. We are doing what we call celebrity guests in the morning. So learning will also be project based and hands on. And we'll have a lot of community members coming in there. We are thinking that there may be opportunities even for sailing and for outdoor, a lot of outdoor fun where kids can learn and and really, it's again, all about the engagement. So that's going to be a great opportunity for both kids and for families to have that full day program that we haven't offered in the past. We also have, I think, high school might be on there. We have some partnerships coming up on some new types of offerings in high school, like coding, which we haven't had before. And also some environmental work and some urban agricultural work as well. So really new and new interesting themes and expanded offerings, that's what it's all about.
And and if I can just jump in on the high school component, what we're doing differently for our high schools, we're opening up all of our high schools this year. In the past, we may have only opened two or three high schools for programming. All of our high schools are open. We've given them an individual budget out of the ESSR funds to plan programming for their students, to reengage them in the learning process. And so you will see them also engaged in some wonderful programming, a lot of hands on programs throughout the summertime.
And I'm not sure if Tiffany is on to talk about some of the special education offerings that will be available.
Yeah, she's here. She's, that Paul, Paul bring her in.
And while Tiffany comes on, we will also be continuing our special programming for students who are at risk for disengagement. You know, we've been doing that now for seven years. Last year, even in the virtual world, we were able to connect 93 students to career opportunities. We have a social justice theme, so we are talking about the issues as they happen. We push in a lot of supports on social emotional learning and do a lot of small group opportunities for our students during the summer. So that's the career pathways and social justice camp that will be available for students, grade six to 12. Tiffany join?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm here, if you can, if you guys can hear me. I just wanted to say, so for special education, we're providing special education supports pre K through grade 12. And it's our, it's two different things. It's our extended school year program. So the majority of our students who require special education supports will be in the embedded within the programs that were discussed previously. But we also have for students who require it by way of their individualized education plan, what we call extended school year services. And again, that's pre K through 12, similar to what you heard Ms. Valesquez was talking about as we did last year and the year before that, looking at project based learning, looking at themes throughout the summer. And then also for our programs, looking at extent, an extension of the program. But again, some of the programming that we are servicing students, again, for the most part, who have what we call low incidence disabilities, again, require a lot of specialized supports. So we are also providing an opportunity for our students within those programs as well. Again, to mirror some of what we're doing in the district, but continuing to do that based off of the child's individualized needs.
Thank you, Tiffany. And so we're asking everybody to join the fun. We kicked off a program on Saturday with about almost 300 families showed up for our summer fun resource fair for families and student that was managed. Danny Diaz and David Lowe and his team, a phenomenal job engaging our families. Several of our community partners showed up, shared what possibilities there are for students. That was an amazing kickoff. And then on June 2nd, we're going to kick off the superintendent's community wide fitness and move challenge. And as some of it, you know, all of us know that we have gained a little extra. Somebody said COVID 19 pounds. And we are about getting us to figure out ways to keep moving. Try to do what we can to get fit. Our athletic office has put together some phenomenal activities. But the challenge is going to be available for you to decide what works best for you. We've already had members from our Board of Alders Youth and Education Committee challenging us over here at the Board of Ed for fitness challenge. But Dr. Tracy is going to lead us off on June 2nd with a community wide event that will run through our summer series, June, July 1st to July 30th. But we will have that pre launch coming up on June 2nd. And then on July 1st will be our opening day. And on August 16th, we are going to have a back to school celebration and rally like you have not seen before. It will be at Bowen Field and lots more to come on that. So what else we can do? We are so excited to be working with our community partners to kick off a summer of fun weekend extravaganza. And what we want to do is to provide our students and family with engagement opportunities that they otherwise would not have. We are talking to our community partner that has a 23 acre summer camp in the area. Will provide swimming pool, aqua activities, family swim, family swim lessons, archery, rope course activities, zip line, nature exploration and family hikes, team building activities and group games, family zumba on land as well as aqua zumba. That's what I'm looking forward to. And also at this weekend camp, which will be available on Saturdays and Sundays, we'll provide flick and float, family movie night at the camp. Those that would be an option to watch a movie while floating in the pools, drive in style movie nights, weekly specialty options. This where we will be able to bring in local animal programs from Mystic Aquarium, the Maritime Aquarium, Beersley Zoo. We're looking to do campfire cooking and other discovery activities. The whole point is to get our families excited again, to give our students activities that we have not done before. So this summer fun 2021 is intended to help our families feel as if they belong again in a during a time when we have all felt a little bit disconnected and we've all struggled a little bit. We want to be able to bring them together, lift them up and give our students and families opportunities that we've not been able to provide in the past.
Gemma, there's one thing I would like to add, if you, if I may.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that folks know that during the summer, parents need to know that we will have full academic team there and we will have supports for multilingual learners will be embedded throughout. And also our reading program, we always have a really great reading, robust reading program for any family who who needs that extra support. And I just, I didn't want it to get lost that we are doing all of that type of support and programming as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And what else? We have had some wonderful conversations over the past weeks or so with some key partners who are willing to host New Haven Day at their sites. Mystic Seaport is planning a set of activities where we are invited to spend the day there, going on boat trips and doing a variety of other sea type activities. We'll have lunch. Our families and students are invited and we are planning to make that day at Mystic Seaport a great day, tentatively scheduled for August 7th. The Norwalk Aquarium has also done a fantastic job in putting together special opportunities for our students and families to get out of New Haven and get into enjoying some activities that they otherwise would not have. And same for Beersley Zoo for the younger students. We also know that we have to do some work to connect our students who are most at risk for disengagement, that risk for dropping out. We have about 500,000, I'm sorry, 5,000 plus chronically absent students. We are now in a collaboration with the governor's Learning Engagement Attendance Program, unfortunately titled LEAP. They've been using that LEAP acronym. We are not using that in New Haven. We are calling it out. It's Learning Engagement Attendance Program. We already have a very strong LEAP brand here. We don't want to confuse our families and our parents. But ACES, which is our regional education support center, will is the fiduciary for a $1.2 million grant focusing on reducing chronic absenteeism. And what this is going to allow us to do is to expand that door to door outreach by linking in our trusted partners that we have been using throughout the 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 spring and summer and even last year. It's an expansion of what we shared with you, the walk on Wednesdays, the WOW Wexler. We're going to expand that program across the week, bringing in partners like, continuing with folks like Ice the Beef. Our Clifford Bears Care Coordinators have joined us. The UNH Youth Justice Institute will provide community relations, a relationship building so that folks understand that it's, we we don't just go knocking doors and say, hi, we want to get your child back in school. We have to connect with our families, understand what their needs are and figure out how we can support them. It's important that we don't, that we don't make door knocking or family outreach a more oppressive situation where they're already stressed. Many of our families are working under extreme conditions. So we want to ensure that we have training for all of our folks who are going to be knocking on doors and even doing telephonic connection with our families to make sure we are doing the right thing in the right way when we reach out to them. And of course, we're going to hone in on the the data collection component so that we're able to track not just that we knocked on the door, but what happened? What was the next step in ensuring that we have been able to touch those families and connect them up to all the wonderful supports that we that we want to offer our students this summer? And that, that's our summer of fun. We are hoping to truly excite our community and to excite you, our leaders on the board, to support us in enrolling this out.
Thank you, Gemma. Thank you so much, Gemma and team for presenting. As you can see, the team is working really, really hard. Gemma has come out and has been doing a lot. When I said Gemma, I really appreciate the level of work she has put into that and the level of work of the entire team. Because it has to be teamwork to make this happen. So there's great collaboration going on to make this happen for students and families. I'm looking forward to the summertime, actually. to make this happen for students and families. I'm looking forward to the summertime actually to see some of these being executed. So keep watching. We'll share more of an update. We have the funds to do it and we're doing, we're splurging with our students to make sure they're the ones who are benefited from this. So thank you so much. And if you have questions, now is the time, I guess, to ask through your board president.
Thank you, uh Mr. Golson and then Dr. Jackson.
Thank you, Madam President. Um you know, oftentimes as a board member, uh folks will call me and 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 ask what happened at the meeting, specifically what happened on a certain item. I'm able usually to reference them to a link um on the web, on our school website that describes exactly what they're looking for more often than not. Um and that's why, that's one of the reasons why um I continue to ask for of written presentations um when they do do presentations. So one, I can understand what happened because I'm more of a visual guy. I like to read and understand as opposed to try to listen uh with other distractions and try to understand. So I have to start by saying that summer school planning update was terrific. It was excellent. It was easy to follow. Didn't have any fancy catchphrases, new for, new 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 deal phrases or whatever. It was just easy to understand. It's easy for me to be able to talk to people about. It's easy for me to direct people to because it's on the website. Um so that's a good thing. Um in terms of this this discussion around increased community access to testing, I don't have a clue actually what happened there. I I strayed for a moment and I completely lost it. And there's nothing written for me to go back to and look at. And and that is, and I I continually ask the administration, if you're going to make a presentation to us, please put it in writing so that um if we're not able to follow along while it's being discussed, we could go back and look at it later or look at it before the meeting. And there's nothing here. Um so I would, I would hope in the future um that um we would, we would um continue to stress that uh when presentations are given to the board. But otherwise, um the summer school planning update was terrific. Um the um addressing unfinished business, I still have to unpack that, but at least the information is there for me to look at. Uh thank you, Madam President. And thank you, um thank you to all the staff that that um put this together. Um and thank you, um Dr. Tracy for for this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Golson. Mr. Golson, may I just say the increase, it was not a lot to say about that. We just wanted the board to know that S-BAC testing is going on. And that when we say increased community access, we're talking about ensuring that the students who are and in remote learning are getting access to their testing, just like those who are in school. So we didn't see a lot to be putting in the packet. We just wanted to state it.
Thank you. But because I missed part of that, I didn't, I didn't know what community access to testing meant. Uh thank you very much.
Got it. Thank you. Dr. Jackson?
Thank you. First of all, it's wonderful, guys. Thank you. I saw so, I can see how excited you were. I'm excited too. And I have kids, so in the school, so I get to benefit from the twenty-three acre camp, whatever that is. So I'm excited about that. Looks like fun. Thank you so much. Now I just have a couple of questions, you know. Um I did not I want to see or know, because I know you guys have this probably planned. The mental health support and interventions. We just had a whole year of pandemic. Family members have died, family members, people seeing their families sick. We have children that are just don't know what is going on. You know, they have a lot of questions. Um this, the chronic absenteeism piece, I just had a bunch of kids come down my street today and I know there are kids because they were young in a stolen car and it cracked up like three cars on my street. You know, so we have a lot of fun planned, which is great, but I just want to know mental health-wise and that how big is that? Because I hope we're spending a lot of money on that. And what is that plan? You don't have to give that today. Could we have like a a presentation on that at um before, you know, at some point? Dr. Tracy?
So last time, hi, thank you, Dr. Jackson. Last time when we presented um the way the funds are being spent, the SO two fund, there was a big component there on social emotional learning, which covers the mental health section of of that piece. It was quite a few million dollars devoted to that aspect of the work, which is working out in terms of what next school year will look like. So when we talk about the summer fun, a lot of this mental health piece is shrouded in this summer fun piece. The whole thing, art, fun, having kids have ways of emptying the catharsis that's built up over all this time, being COVID-bound or what have you. So those are part of it, although not spelt out to say mental health per se. So this is how we try to push those pieces in. So that's, kids are enjoying themselves along with their families, not just the children, but along with their families, having places to go. Swimming lessons, volleyball, whatever it is we can do for them. Hiking to get rid of some of those things that have gone on with them that we really don't even know what they are, but know that they have occurred. So even though we haven't spelled out and said this is mental health, it's all integrated in what we're doing.
Okay. And and it's any of that, though, um therapy, any of that, um just driving people to like whatever, because I know we partner with Clifford Beers, but driving, driving them to Clifford Beers be set up for the individual therapy and all that kind of stuff. And you know, I just, I'm, there's a lot of that out there. Yes.
Yes.
You know, I just want to make sure that and that the families know that that is there. We're doing all this fun, but we also have a way to put you in therapy because that's the only way to say it, therapy.
Yes.
You know, and and we do know that a lot of our kids are going to need, we might not, and I think it's gonna hit us like a thunderstorm at some point. You know, when you said catharsis, Dr. Tracy, when it's all just gonna come out. You know, and I just want us to be ready. Um and okay, so that's my, that's the mental piece. I had a question about that. Um
And yes, that we are working closely. Clifford Bears is one of our partners. We're working closely. And the, and the Y C E, no stones left unturned. So Clifford Bears is very much one of our partners.
Always are disengaged kids that are having issues. Some of our, some of our kids that you would never think are having issues. Um I've never, okay. Um okay, as far as the the um, that was for that. And then I have a question. What exactly is pedagogy, gaji?
Pedagogy.
Pedagogy. Pedagogy.
Literally, it means teaching children, peta, gorgeous.
I saw peta, but I wasn't sure. Okay. And then the other question for for Ms. Ms. Velasquez, the homogeneous grouping that you talked about, that means all girls, all boys?
No, um it it means um i- if we're targeting reading ability, right? That they would be homogeneously grouped by their reading level and what their need is. If they need phonics, it'd get that, right? So um grouped for a need, for their specific need, but only part of the day. So like during this enrichment targeted instructional block.
Okay, great. So look, I'm not, I don't do education every day. So I was like, what does that mean? Okay. And then for Dr. Sherbin, um I just want to know, we're in testing right now. And I, does she have a number of how many families opt out of the testing? And just to let you know, um Dr. Tracy, my kids are opt out, we're an opt-out family and there was nothing, um there was, there was no pre-arranged or anything for them today. So that I just would like to know, um for Dr. Sherbin, what, how many families opt out of standardized testing in our district?
So there is no official opting out of standardized testing by the state. Um so at the school level, I don't have an exact number. Uh we're not collecting that number. But certainly the schools are accommodating any families that do not wish to uh participate in testing. And they should be providing an alternate assignment or activity for that time that testing is going on.
Okay, yeah, I know the state does it. Um Dr. Tracy, um I think that we should know each school, who's opting out, who isn't. We need to know that. And um his parents are letting the schools know. So is there a way that we can ask each school to get the, to get that information?
Usually um parents would send to the schools, individual schools and said, my child will not participate in testing. So of course, it's something we could find out. If if parents, if their parents have informed the school that they want their children to opt out of testing, I'm sure we should have that information.
Yeah, I think we should know that because their, their, their parents that opt out are part of our community. And they shouldn't be, you know, we should know who they are and not make them feel like, no, they don't matter. So we're not gonna know who they are. I think that we should know who our opt-out parents are so that we make sure that when school, when the testing comes around, that we are supporting their children, just like we will support them any other day.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. That's, that's, that's my, um and when, when will we be able to get those numbers, Dr. Tracy?
I will ask um my staff, who is in charge of schools, to find that out. I can't in my brain now. My brain is not thinking that way to tell you when, but we'll get it to you. Trust me.
Thank you so much. And I just want to say again, thank you so much, you guys. I know you're working hard in such a a crazy time. And I think we're seeing, I think we could see some light at the end of the tunnel with all of this. We still have a little bit ways to go, but you guys are working hard. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson, Dr. Tracy, Mr. Wilcox.
Uh yes, thank you. Just want to briefly say I greatly appreciated all the presentations. Um, lot of good work happening. Um just wanted to mention the two in particular echoing some of the comments that have already been mentioned by my colleagues. Um did enjoy the talk that Ms. Velasquez gave. Uh does look like there's a whole lot in there to to digest, definitely. I just, I'm, I'm really hoping it stays positive. It was, it was a great um presentation and I like a lot of what I'm seeing in in that it is a positively looking at the needs of individual students to meet them where they are and um sometimes things move away from that over time to to where it's testing and numbers and 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 so on. So just, I I really like where it's at. I'm hoping to hear in the future, maybe this fall or or this winter after the parent-teacher conferences have happened, how this connects with the 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 connecting with the parent piece and the family piece and and how they can interact with this. I know this is a new and developing program, so just also seeing how that uh one of my colleagues mentioned, you know, jargon and things like that. And I've also heard from parents that you know, things like Lexile scores and things like that are 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 not the typical thing that uh non-educators deal with uh like, like most of us uh don't. And so do like to hear that. And um just also like to say, the summer of fun does sound like a a lot of fun. And I'm also hoping that as from that, that that you all are keeping track, evaluating somehow uh which are the programs that that really work. I mean, we have this extra funding this year. And um it might really help us fight for funding in future years for summer enrichment so that that summer, there, there's options for parents and families to 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 not just have fun in kids' camps, but also um help their kids excel um as goes back to Ms. Velasquez's presentation, engage students learn and they put it all together and and they learn very well um while they're having fun. So uh if there's anything I can do to help with the summer programming, I'd be happy to talk to somebody. So thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Dr. Joyner, then Mr. Golson?
Well, first of all, I'd like to uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be brief because I can talk about some of the stuff in teaching and learning. But I'd like to compliment every single person that worked closely together to to bring this about. Uh you guys are working together as a team. And that's, that's phenomenal. Uh I'm optimistic in a way that I haven't been uh in terms of central office coordination and harmony. Uh I can see the spirit of Charles Redd and Nora Barker.
That's dead mother's baby.
Yes, I can see that. And uh the truck was, the truck was and what have you. And and it's, it's, it's in concert with this whole notion of working together as a community so that we can get the justice that has been denied for so long. But I, but I, but I want to just end with a comment to the community. We need people in the community, particularly parents and families, to match the commitment of people in the schools. Everything that you outlined tonight is stuff that I had to pay for when I was a little boy. Uh uh you know, and if you didn't have the money, you couldn't go. And uh we have so many options that are available if we could, if we would only take advantage of them. And 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 I'm imploring uh people in the community, the families I've taught, people in my own family, match the commitment of these folk who spend hours after work and don't ask for overtime because educators don't get overtime. Uh and uh please match their commitment. If we, if we can do that, we can really make a great difference. And let's try to keep trying to act harmoniously so that we can uh be better as a group than we are at any time as individuals. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Mr. Golson?
Thank you, Madam President. Um I think that um I think that the the um parents in the community certainly match, if not surpass, the commitment um that our administrators have in regards to their children um accessing programming that will better their, their lives. I mean, you know, we, we see that of all year long with questions around the lottery and 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 all kinds of other things. Parents want to see their kids get a good education. And they're certainly going to access programs that they're able to access. Um there may be barriers in place like transportation or so on that they need to overcome. Uh and and that's our job is to help them overcome that. So um I'm sure the commitment is there on the, from the parents. But I I had a question uh for Dr. Tracy. Um this camp that we're accessing this summer, um who's the partner that's providing that camp?
The partner we are talking to now is the Y. There's a camp, um Mount Laurelton that is located um at the end of Route sixty-nine in Hampden.
That's terrific. Um I'm just wondering why it wasn't, why they weren't named in your um documentation. Is there, is there a concern about that or?
We just don't have formalized agreement yet. We have really good conversations, so we thought it's best to speak of it um in these terms.
Thank you.
All right. Thank, thank you very much.
So if there are no more questions, let me say
Tracy, if I may, please, um Pedro Mendiya did um connect with me and reminded me that we did not include the L component. And I just want the board to know that we will be sending additional information. His team has done a terrific job um putting together planning for our L students. And um I did not
It's an oversight.
It wasn't oversight, but um I just wanted to apologize for that and to let the board know that there's some exciting work happening around um L that we will include um in the future.
Because we have to include special education, disengage youth Ls according to the grant stipulation. But let me say, in terms of the summer fun, I challenge you now, this board, to meet me at the bottom of the rice field. We'll start this challenge by walking up the other side of the mountain, East Rock. So put on your sneakers and let's go. I had All right, thank you so much. Um we'll give the date, we'll give the date. We're working out the dates when we're gonna do these things. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Thanks, team. Thanks, board, for listening.
Thank you, everyone. Okay. All right. Seeing no further discussion, um we'll move on to the president's report. And I have a couple of reminders before we um open up the discussion on the board meetings. Uh the first is that in an email and at our last meeting, I asked you all for your input on topics and days and times of the week that may work best. Um so this week I'll be connecting with facilitator, facilitators to pin down some dates for our board retreat. So to be continued and I'll let you know as soon as we have some dates down. I also want to remind you that we have to schedule a special meeting between May twenty-sixth and June fourth. Um and the reason for that is that we believe that the Board of Alders will finalize their budget on May twenty-sixth. And our CFO's last day is And our CFO's last day is June eleventh, and so we want to make sure that we finalize that before um, he leaves. So between those two dates. Um. So if you can email me again, days of the weeks that work best, I will try to make sure that. We figure that out, but we want to start scheduling that as soon as possible so that we give enough notice. Um, and we have enough notice. I also meant to schedule an executive session for tonight um, to discuss the process and timeline of Dr. Tracy's eval. Um, so by the end of this week, for your consideration, I'll email you the suggested timeline and blank copy of the evaluation. So that we can figure out um, some dates for our meetings and um, just just the process. And so I guess the plan would be to schedule an executive session for our next meeting to go over this. And um, in terms of the update on returning to in-person meetings, I've asked Dr. Tracy and she's agreed. To have a plan in place should the governor's executive order not be extended. And we have to return to in-person meetings after May twentieth. Um, we'll need to set a school location and we'll also need a plan on how to navigate the hybrid meeting since. Some board members have already expressed they will not be attending in person. Any questions or discussion on that, Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I I do have a question. I don't know if we're going to have a um, a further discussion around this, so I guess I'll ask it now. Is there a minimum amount of folks who have to attend in person in order for a meeting? Um, to be um, legal? What I think, I'm I'm guessing is probably a quorum, like four, but I'm I'm asking in the.
That's, that's a good question. Attorney Mooney?
Yes, thank you. Uh, there is not. Um, under the Freedom of Information law. Boards of Ed, any public agency, including boards of Ed. Can meet. But and the statute says uh, by electronic means or otherwise. So um, uh, there in an extreme example. Uh, if there were an emergency and a public agency had to meet, you could set up a speakerphone. At the location and everyone could call in. So there is not a um, minimum.
I have a couple of follow-up questions related to what you just said there.
My, my wheels are turning too. Go ahead, Mr. Golden.
I remember um, reading somewhere in the past. That if you have a electronic meeting like that. That there would have to be a way for everyone to be able to be understood. Setting up a speakerphone, I don't think that would, that would meet that that level, but. Uh, I guess we can have some additional conversations around that, but do our bylaws have any? I I haven't looked at our bylaws in a while, uh, but I will tonight when I want to get off this this some meeting. Do our bylaws of have any? Make any determination as to a quorum around electronic meeting?
I'm not aware of um, the the bylaws. I'd be happy to look at that as well, and I didn't mean to. Uh, by my extreme example to make a point to to cause any confusion. I'm not suggesting that's a good idea. It just illustrates the fact that there is no minimum. A meeting's a meeting by electronic means or otherwise. And so um. Irrespective of the pending executive orders, uh, public agencies can. Um, members of public agencies can participate by electronic means. Um, I've always considered this to be a question of parliamentary procedure. Because the question is not only may they, but should they? And uh, public agencies, I believe, have some uh. Judgment to exercise in terms of whether and under what conditions. Uh, they will permit their uh, members to participate electronically. I'm speaking in the first instance of what's required under the Freedom of Information law. The Board of Education has the the right to determine under what circumstances people can um, participate remotely. And it's my understanding um, that uh, the board has a bylaw that says that uh. Board members may participate remotely, but not in executive session. Um, and uh. Want, you know, that's a judgment for the board to make, but I certainly understand why that would be true. The security of the executive session would not be uh, easily guaranteed under those circumstances.
Thank you, Attorney Mooney. Dr. Joyner?
Oh, Attorney Mooney is 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 uh, right on all points. Uh, the only, only session that we would have to be physically present would be. Uh, in an executive session. Uh, Mr. Goldson is right. In in the sense that uh, you have to be able to hear what's being said and you have to be able to be heard. Uh, and that's our ninety-three-two-five-point-four-three. Bylaw, which is really uh. In line with the Connecticut general statute on meeting of government agencies. Uh, and the Freedom of Information Commission Advisory Opinion. So board members can elect not to attend a a physical meeting as long as they can. Be be present electronically, as long as they can hear the deliberations, as long as they can be heard.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Dr. Jackson?
As a body, we could, we could, we could. Keep our meetings. Like this if we chose to.
Yes, we could.
If we voted to keep our meetings remote. We could. And honestly, I can tell you that um. It's it's more convenient. I can go home. I'm not out all night. Um, this is volunteer and we do, this is a working board. This is not. This is not a stamping board. This is a working board. So the fact that we can go home and meet, yeah, I guess the pandemic kind of spoiled us around this. Um, but I I I think that we should have a discussion and make a decision. And if we decide to continue meeting this way, then we decide to continue meeting this way. That that's what I would suggest we do if that's what, you know, if if that's possible, but the way we meet is up to us.
She's right.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam President. Um, I agree with Dr. Jackson that we should have. A discussion and a vote on this. Uh, because I I think this really gets to the core. You know, we we had a teacher today. Who who spoke their opponent participation, and she said. That even though we've seen emails from other teachers around this, even though she has a doctor. Um, stating that she should not return to work uh, physically. Um, the the administration has told her that she has to. And she's taking sick days now, um, in order not to endanger her health. And we've had several emails um, from several teachers around this very same issue. Um, and we've had teachers speak at these public sessions um, at public participation on the same issue. And the fact is that we really should lead by example. And if we're saying, if we in the administration are saying the school is safe enough for people to return. Then we should be willing to return. It's sure, it's convenient for teachers not to be. In the classroom, uh, instead to be working remotely. They don't have to commute. They don't have to do a whole lot of the things, but convenience doesn't, isn't the whole, is isn't the entire answer to this? It it's about leading by example. And if we're, and and if we're going to say to all those people. That it is safe enough for them to return, then we should not be using um, um, safety as a reason for not to return. And the whole idea that it's just, it's more convenient, well, that again. Uh, is not a good enough reason not to to be. In front of these parents and these teachers and these students and these community members physically. And 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 doing our business in a transparent, open and and um, and um. In in a way that they have to do their business. So we can have a vote on it. Uh, I think we should have a vote on it. I think we should all be on the record of how we feel about this. And I'm going to be on the record of supporting. This is a lot more convenient for me. Absolutely, um, meeting remotely, but it's not the right way to do it. And just because it's convenient doesn't mean it should be the right way to do it. So I'm going to 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 insist, as Dr. Jackson has. That we have a discussion around this, that we vote on it, and we go on the record of how we feel about this. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Um, Mr. Wilcox, then Mr. Conaway.
I believe Mr. Conaway had his hand up before I did, ma'am.
Go ahead, Mr. Conaway. Dr. Joyner, did you have your hand up?
No, no, it just, I I don't think I should comment at this point.
You guys keep moving around in my Hollywood squares.
In the interest of peace, I will hold my comments.
Yeah, I just want to say that I think that that um, you know, the pandemic has presented a number of different situations. And I think that there's, there's, there's going to be a new normal. And um, I do think Zoom is in that, in that wheelbarrow. And um, I I I I do think that um, Zoom meetings have been efficient and it has nothing to do with. Um. You know, not wanting to go into the building or anything, but um, I just think that that is an option. Um, and uh, and and if we have a vote on it, then um, I think that you you, you know, we'll know where people stand there. And and I I certainly have not made up my mind totally, but I'm I'm not going to rule out not having Zoom meetings. Um, I I I like Zoom meetings. They're very, very, very uh, convenient. They're efficient. And 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 they're a new wave of the way folks are going to be doing business. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Conaway. Mr. Wilcox and then Dr. Jackson.
Yeah, I'm just going to suggest I'm hoping that uh, if the governor's order is is uh. Moved to another date, not expire on May twentieth, that there'll be some guidance as to what the new realities for public meetings are going to be. We are only one of must be thousands of boards and commissions and. Groups that are affected by the freedom, the open meetings laws in Connecticut. And I'm hoping that in these news realities that my colleague just mentioned, that we're going to have some. New rules and new thinking around what the right way to do it. I will just say that um. My employer required me to go back to work. I went back to work. Uh, my employer had different ways for me to um. Talk to human resources and I don't want to conflate. The public meetings that we're doing myself. I don't want to conflate the public meetings with what we're doing. With uh, what our employees are doing because um, the primary focus of this committee is not. Only to be an example, which I agree. We can be, we should be an example. And we're hoping, and more and more, we are a positive example of the way to interact. But I also think that um. It's really how to do the business of the board in the way that is maximum for the public to see what's happening. We've had up to four hundred plus. Close to five hundred individuals tuning into this meeting. It's very rare, I'm guessing, that we've ever had five hundred people show up. To see us face to face, and maybe we need to have in this new reality. Different ways of looking at that and 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 how we. Have the um. Public parts of these meetings where people can be in person because obviously being in person is is key, but. I I'm I'm really hoping that the Freedom of Information Committee. Uh, which is meeting by telephone now, I mean, uh, currently um. Is uh, has some guidance as to how we should be doing this so that when we do have this discussion and we do have our votes. And we do go on record, that that we're also working with what the new reality is going to be for Connecticut boards and commissions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Dr. Jackson and then Mayor Elicker? Dr. Jackson, I think she's frozen.
Yes?
Did you have a question? You had, you have your hand up. Is that from before?
I'm sorry, let me take it down. Let me take it down. Let me take it down. Sorry.
Mayor Elicker?
Well, I I agree with a lot, what a lot of folks are have been saying about uh, how it's important to be consistent and um. To expect of ourselves what we expect of others. Uh, I, we're on the city side talking about this a lot, as you can imagine as well, because as cases go down and. Uh, many more people get vaccinated. And it looks like the governor uh, in the near future will um. Uh, change some of the executive order. That will start moving back towards uh, in-person meetings or some hybrid. Uh, I would recommend that Dr. Tracy, you and your team look into the technology of having an in-person meeting that can also be on Zoom. It's probably a little bit more of a pain than you actually think, so you might might have your team kind of consider what that looks like. We 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 keep in mind that only forty-one percent of the city is vaccinated at this point. And uh, our cases are still pretty high. And we want a situation where uh, people can feel comfortable, right? Uh, and that 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 includes uh. Uh, being able to attend meetings in person, but also to feel comfortable if they uh, if they don't feel ready to do that. And also agreed on the point of there's so many more people attending that. Some hybrid model is probably where I think we may land with a lot of these meetings. Uh, as we slowly transition, transition back to normal life.
Thank you, Mayor Elicker. Dr. Joyner?
Uh, I wasn't going to say anything, but I I I am, particularly since uh, we've been talking about critical thinking. I think when you compare two things, the first thing you have to establish is that they're equivalent. And um. The the comparing our meeting. With with teachers going back to work is not an equivalent comparison. I think the other thing is that. You're absolutely right about setting a good example, and I think for the past three meetings. We've set a really good example, and the greatest example we can set is how we treat each other in meetings. And how we deal with disagreement. Whether or not we are prepared when we show up, whether we've read the background materials and so on and so forth. And whether or not we are respecting one another. And I think as long as we do that. We'll be fine.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Dr. Tracy?
I must say that my staff and I, my executive team, we started meeting in person. Of course, we followed mitigation strategies of being in our mask. And keeping social distancing. And we had a very awesome meeting last time when we met, just to be there and seeing each other's faces, like. They're physically there in your presence. We got a lot accomplished, so I just wanted to say that we started meeting. As a matter of fact. Um, we have been meeting with senior leadership from we started out in March from COVID hit. We haven't stopped meeting. In person. We just try to be very careful about what we do.
Thank you, Dr. Tracy. Dr. Jackson?
I just want to, you know, say that. Um, just to to the, I don't mean any disrespect in saying that I want to meet. Because it is convenient. You know, I'm a working mother. Um, and everyone knows how loaded that phrase is, working mother. Um, it's pretty loaded and uh, it is what it is. That's my life. I wouldn't trade it. But when someone gives me something that makes it easier and and you realize that. And and you can still do and make a, make a difference. That's why I like Zoom. You know, I can um, still come home and do what I have to do. So that being said. Um, you know, there's still, there's still some fear though also. Um, we still have, you know, I still have people who are dear to me, who have nerves, who are still fighting. You know, fighting for their their lives and um, we buried someone near and dear to a lot of people on Saturday. So it still is a reality. Um. The mayor, I didn't know Mayor Elicker, that we were only at forty, would you say forty percent vaccinated? I didn't, I didn't know that number. Um, I would love to see us well over fifty. And and we're, we're really doing a push. I know the medical professionals and. The city were doing a big push to try to get everyone on board and getting the vaccine. Um. But, you know, we're still in a pandemic. We're not there yet and, you know. I think I risk, I risk my life every day when I go to work. Yeah, I'm vaccinated, but, you know, it it is a risk and um. So in going to a meeting, you know. That's a little, that's a little, that's a little iffy for me. I definitely would vote for Zoom. Um. But it's no, to no disrespect. To our heroes in the classroom, to our heroes anywhere. I think all of us that are, that are out here. Going to work, no matter what you do in this day and age, in this pandemic. You're a hero because you leave your house and you go back home and you do a sign of the cross and you hug your family. You know, so. I definitely will vote to continue Zoom, but I guess whatever you guys. Whatever we decide is what we decide. So, but I'm glad that we're having the discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Conaway?
Yeah, um, I I too did not know that we were only forty-one percent vaccinated. I did not know that. I thought it was a little higher.
Yeah, um, I, I too did not know that we were only 41% vaccinated. I did not know that. I thought it was a little higher. I think maybe the, uh, the national rates are a little higher, or maybe Connecticut rates are a little higher than New Haven. And, um, if I had to vote tonight, I would vote to, uh, initially continue to be on Zoom. That's what I would vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conaway. Mr. Goldson?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I didn't know that number either. And, um, that should be, that's a telling number, and it should concern a lot of teachers and a lot of parents, um, in regards to sending their kids back and sending their kids back to school, or, or teachers returning back to school. Uh, so again, I go back to leading by example. If, if we're saying it's only 40%, so maybe it's not safe enough to return yet, we should be, we should have made that same determination for our staff people. And that's all I'm saying. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Goldson. I'll, I'll just say for me, it's not about COVID or going into the building. Um, it does, most of you have stated, you know, this, this COVID has shown us something different, that we can do things a little bit differently, still be just as effective, um, reach even more people than we've reached at those in-person meetings, and have the convenience of, you know, when we shut it down, we can just go to bed or do whatever it is we do after we end our meetings, rather than having to walk through a dark parking lot to get into our car, to drive home, and, you know, after a very, already a very long, long day, because most of us also work. Um, and it's not that any of us don't care. I think the fact that we're all here meeting shows that we do. It just makes it a little bit easier for us to do this, um, and, and still get the same results. So that, that's where I'm at with it. I will obviously, you know, go with whatever the board decides to do. Um, but that's just, that's my feeling on it. Thank you. Mayor Elicker?
Uh, ju- just to be clear about the, the number, um, we obviously have a long way to go on vaccinations. Um, I think we're doing pretty well as a, compared to large cities, but we have a lot more work to do, so encourage people to encourage others to get vaccinated. But the, we, um, o- opened up schools before vaccines were available, and the cases in schools remain very, very low. So I don't want, uh, people to get the impression that schools are unsafe. Uh, the things are going quite well since the reopening, and the cases are very low.
Thank you, Mayor Elicker. Okay, seeing no further discussion, we'll move on to the Head Start Report. Mr. Wilcox?
Um, okay, this will be extremely brief, because we have not met since our last meeting. Our next meeting will be on Thursday, May 20th. But before I leave this item, Madam President, I believe I forgot to ask you during your president's, president's report to mention the student elections. Um, and I just wanted to, uh, let the board know that, uh, there, I have to confirm the date and time, and I will, and I will send it to everybody, but I believe this Friday, we're going to have an announcement at City Hall to have the, um, at 4:00 PM for the newest student member of our Board of Education. We did have a student that went and completed the entire process. Um, actually, Dr. White's on the call. Maybe he can confirm that date and time, but, um...
Yes, it is this Friday, um, May 14th at 4:00 PM at City Hall. Uh, the, the newest member of the board will be announced, the, uh, as it's the one candidate. Uh, the city clerk will make the declaration at that time.
Okay, thank you. So I guess another bright spot on our next meeting agenda might be the, uh, announcement and introduction of the, um, student. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Dr. White? Uh, Mr. Wilcox, does that conclude your Head Start Report?
Yes.
Thank you. Governance Report, Dr. Jackson?
Good evening, everyone. It's your favorite governance chair. So I made everybody smile, like even the mayor's smile. Okay. Um, I just have some very quick updates. Um, I'm going to talk about the residency policy that we are working on. We pulled it off the agenda, because there need, there are a couple of things that need to be fixed, and that's the residency, residency policy for students in the district. Um, we are also working with our new COO, Mr. Lamb. I did tell him, welcome, beginning of the meeting, welcome. We're working with Mr. Lamb on our filtration policies, the air filtration policy. So there's a little lag on that policy, because we were kind of in between, um, in between COOs, basically. So we waited until he came, so he's probably working with Pepe to, um, go through that policy, to bring it to governance. The curriculum team, of course, Dr. Um, Joyner and his people are working on several policies within, within the Series 6000, and that will continue to be brought forward as, um, as it, um, as they presented to us. Um, we are anxiously awaiting for the food policy to get to us. So I know, uh, my colleague Larry hates to hear me talk about that, but I'm waiting for that, um, uh, the food allergy, life-threatening allergies policy, we want that. Um, hopefully we'll have that passed by September for our new year. Um, and also, we are, um, working on the support, um, policy for the families that opt out. And it is not going to be a full policy. We're just going to put it within our testing policy. It's just like a little, um, like another piece of the, the policy, another addendum, not some big, just, just, just so that, um, it's there. We know that we need to support the families that choose to opt out of testing. And that is it. I don't have anything to, um, have been voted on. So that's the update for governance. Are there any questions? Okay. Okay. Now, I was moving on to facilities naming.
Oh, go ahead. I was just going to say facilities naming.
Okay. Hi, everybody. I'm back. I'm here, your facility naming, um, report. And I just want to let you know that we, um, committee to rename the school formerly called Columbus Family Academy has met, and they've had two meetings. They meet on Tuesday evening at this point. Um, and they have a meeting tomorrow. They are, they are on their way, um, to finding us a new name. And they are going by the policy. So if you have any questions about the process, the process is in the policy. Like the proof is in the pudding, the process is in the policy. Um, and I really, they really seem to be a, a good team. And like I said, they are really focused on the word "family." That school and the students really, um, treasure the word "family." So, um, I'm trying to stand back, because, you know, we don't really want to look like we're all in the mix as board members. We need to let the community make this decision. Um, but I'm hoping that they, that the word "family" is up in there somewhere, because it is really loud and clear that, that, that that's what they really, really wanted. So we'll see. Um, we'll see what happens. Um, they are tasked to bring us at least one name, but no more than two, so. We'll see.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Mr. Goldson?
Oh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, quick questions, um, Dr. Jackson. Um, first question is, are these meetings, um, publicized, uh, through the normal public meeting process?
Yes, I think, yes, they, they, I, I think, I know the last one was, but we, um, it has been established that they're meeting every Tuesday. If it's not up there, then, uh, we'll make sure it gets up there, but it's not required to be like our meeting.
Um, it's a public meeting. I, I'm assuming that it's required that there's some sort of notification. Uh, I, I guess, I guess our attorney, I guess our attorney could, um, could, could respond to that question.
Let me ask Tiffany, because Tiffany did make it, uh, make it a point to post it. So it has been posted. I don't know if it's a rolling post. Maybe we need to make it a rolling post. But we did make sure that it was posted the last time, so I hope it was posted for tomorrow.
Because it's less than 30 days, because we haven't, because we haven't posted these, um, we haven't adopted it, um, a schedule, haven't posted that schedule for the year, I believe that any public meeting would then have to have 30 days notice. Uh, but then again, um, Mr. Mooney could, could better inform us to, as to, as, as to, um, the legalities of having these meetings.
Oh, for an ad hoc meeting? So for an ad hoc, because for an ad hoc committee, we have to do, we have to post it like that?
A committee is a committee, whether you call it ad hoc, temporary, whatever you call it, it's still a committee.
Let's allow Attorney Mooney to respond. Thank you.
Uh, yes, Mr. Goldson is referring to the, uh, filing of the schedule of regular meetings. And, um, so the meetings that this committee, um, is holding should be posted, as it's a committee of, created by the Board of Education. Um, but as with any other special meeting, the posting can be, uh, no, uh, less than 24 hours in advance of the meeting. And, uh, the agenda cannot be changed at the meeting, because these would not be regular meetings. But those would be the only legal requirements.
Okay, and I believe that, I'll see if it was posted. If it hasn't been posted, then, um, I'll see, but I, I believe it was. I'll check.
I'm looking, I'm looking on our website. I can't find it. So, um, if, if it's somewhere on our website that is not in a normal meeting, um, folder, um, could you let us know what that is, what the link is?
Attorney Mooney, uh, I believe there was a, um, there was a thought that this was considered a subcommittee, as opposed to the full naming committees, the full facilities naming committee.
Right, it is a subcommittee.
I don't know if that changes anything.
Uh, it does not. Um, committees, uh, the Freedom of Information Commission interprets the notion of a committee created by a public agency broadly. And, uh, so if, if these meetings are, um, now, if, if less than a quorum of the committee want to talk about things, that's not a meeting, uh, and, uh, that, that discussion can occur. But to the extent that this committee or subcommittee is, uh, holding a meeting, then those meetings should be posted.
Okay, so, so, okay, so do I have to, do I have to cancel the meeting for tomorrow, Attorney Mooney?
If it's not been posted, it would not be proper to go forward with the meeting.
Okay, so then we will, um, have to add on another week to our eight weeks, and I will move it to next Tuesday, and we will make sure it's posted from now on.
I have a second question, um, Madam President?
Oh, hi, Mr. Goldson.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Dr. Jackson, as you and I have discussed before, one of my appointees, uh, was not contacted for the first meeting. Has that been corrected?
When I notified Tiffany, she said she was in the email, so I don't know what happened. She's on the, she's on the, the thread. So could you ask her, did she get it? Uh, did she, did she get it, because she resented it?
I will do that. Thank you.
So I want to apologize. We won't have the meeting tomorrow, guys. I apologize for that. But it still keeps us in, in line to still be ready for September.
Mayor Elicker?
Just want to say thanks to Dr. Jackson MacArthur for her leadership, working through this.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Mayor Elicker? Dr. Jackson, does that conclude your governance report?
Um, you mean facilities naming?
Your facilities naming and governance?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. Teaching and Learning Report, Dr. Joyner?
I'd like to start by also commending Dr. Jackson. Um, I don't know how you manage being a full-time pediatrician, a full-time devoted mother, uh, and, uh, a, uh, person that probably is on every major group in the city, pro bono. And I also know, you probably want me to say this, but she's also provided pro bono medical services since she's been a pediatrician. I know that for a fact, so I really appreciate you and what you do for this community. Uh, and, and I've loved working on governance with you. We've got some good policy paths, including the, the naming policy. Um, I, uh, we had a, uh, meeting with Dr. Tracy and I, and, and Ms. Vela Squares, uh, because we wanted to get ready for the next TL meeting. And the presentation that they all did tonight is a precursor of, of what we're trying to do. One of the things I think we're going to have to do as a board is to understand that we're policymakers, and that we need to provide policy cover for what the superintendent's trying to do. And for the first time in a long time, we're beginning to see some academic press in the district. And, and our meeting, we talked about a number of things that are really force multipliers when it comes to learning. One is word knowledge. Uh, we also talked about the fact that, that children could be bilingual in terms of their native language, but they also could be bilingual in terms of dialect. And, uh, many of our kids speak a dialect, uh, in their native language, and that's, that compounds, uh, the challenge to learn standard language or academic language. So, so we want to, we want to try to do a systemic initiative where we can know that kids are writing every day in all the classrooms, and they've mastered the various types of writing, persuasive, expository, narrative, and descriptive, that they're learning the words that are key to, uh, that, when they say, when we say schema in education, all we're talking about is what the kid already knows, background knowledge. And, uh, independent reading based on interests. Uh, we, we got to get this entire city excited about reading and about reading stuff that really matters. Uh, because we live in a country right now where some people are anti-scientific, which is problematic. And some people are, uh, do use a scientific method to make decisions. I mean, if you, if you watch CNN or, uh, Fox or any, if you watch CNN and Fox is a great comparison. Uh, but this whole notion of, well, we should take the vaccine or not, or whether people should wear a mask or not, and those things. Uh, it, it, it really is a failure of critical thinking. And the sad thing about it is that we're, we're at a critical time in this country where we can go in one or two directions, or several different directions. And in order for us to go in the right direction, we have to bring everybody up to a level of civility and ability to detect propaganda as opposed to real science. And, and that's a, and that's a challenge for us. So what we want to do going forward is try to create a school system where, where children recognize that they have to be responsible for developing their minds, and we have to be responsible for giving them the tools to do that. I just always tell the kid, I can't go to Weight Watchers and lose weight for you. I can't go to the gym and get strong for you. And that's what I mean when I say match our commitment. The person that's being served should work a little harder than the person that's trying to serve them, because they're the ones that, that have to, have to benefit. And I've been in education long enough to know that when we have problems, it's because, uh, as, as, as a doctor, a doctor can only give you a prescription and tell you what to do. It's up to you to follow it. And so we're, we are providing a whole lot of resources that we've never provided before. We're providing a whole lot of support. And we, it, it, when, when people respond to that and work with us, we're going to see a change in this community that's transformational. And, and we're already different from the rest of the world, because we do care about each other. We do have a good police department. We have, we have a, a good education system. We have a great superintendent, and we have great board members. It's just that we have to come together and, and, and do the kind of things that we know are necessary to create the policy environment that allows our teachers and our families to, to thrive. So that's what we talk about. We talk about writing every day generates excellence, which we talked about word knowledge across the district. And we talked about critical thinking across the content areas. And we talked about developing a district-wide independent reading program based on student interest, not necessarily what we want them to read, but what they, what they need to read. And it doesn't matter, as long as they're reading. And as long as we have good materials in our libraries, and as long as we have citizens that are willing to, uh, donate whatever, whatever resources are necessary to the schools, so the kids do have exciting books to read. Uh, there's, there's a person on this board that was a phenomenal reader when he was in high school, and well above his, his, his grade level in terms of conversation, word knowledge. And actually, everybody in his family's like, I won't name them, but everybody in his family was like that, uh, because I had all of them. And his mother was the kind of person that encouraged her children to do that. And his mother was the kind of person that encouraged her children to do that, and to have debates and, and, and what have you. So we can do it, if we can just come together, if we realize that everybody in this room really wants the same result. Sometimes we have different ways of getting there, but we all want the same result. And that if we are going to create that beloved community that Dr. King had, ha, ha, has talked about, then that's what we're gonna have to do. And, uh, I think we can do it, and I think we have the people, the resources, at least for now, uh, that we can do it. And I'm just hoping that we will, and we will. That's my report, and I'll have a much more robust one at the next, uh, meeting, because we will have had our T L meeting. And thank you, Doc, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Velasquez and Dr. Tracy for that stimulating meeting that we had la- last week.
Welcome. Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Uh, Mr. Conway, Food Service Task Group Report?
Very, very little with Food Service Task, but I will respond to, um, Dr. Jackson about the, um, life-threatening allergies, uh, policy. We are working on that, as well as we're working on, on some updated policies, thirty-five forty-two point thirty-three and thirty-five forty-two point forty-two. Um, we will have our next meeting on Wednesday, May twelve, at five o'clock. And, um, you know, those issues will, will, you know, just stay on, um, you know, stay certainly on our radar, and we are trying to get those things done, um, um, by September. Um, Mr. Wilcox, did you have anything else that you want to, uh, add? Because I know that, um, I, I did not make that last committee meeting. If you, and if you don't, it's cool.
Yeah, just to, along with what you were just saying, we are, um, we did have a meeting to talk specifically about the, the, uh, food allergy-related policy, and I believe it's on the agenda for this Wednesday.
It is.
As, uh, with also possible action, and so it could be, uh, on your desk, so to speak, Dr. Jackson, um, um, as early as Thursday, uh, depending on how discussion and everything goes on Wednesday.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna give, give us a little bit more time, because she said by September, so we'll have, we'll have it there. I don't want to pressure too much, but it possibly, Dr. Jackson, I see you smiling. But anyway, so that's my Food Service Task Force report.
Um, may I ask a question, Mr. Conway?
Absolutely.
Our two, Madam Chairperson, Ms. Rivera. So I heard they talk about, uh, food allergy policy. I thought the board had already passed a policy. Is this a new one or an enhanced policy? I thought they already worked on one.
Go ahead, Matt.
So the board has passed a policy. There has been some changes that requires us to update that policy. Okay. The primary change that you're gonna see is that we're just matching whatever's the requirement of the state. It's based on the KAB model policy for this. And, uh, one, couple changes that I think are going to be very positive is it's gonna require the district update annually, the food allergy management plan that you all have already worked out, but we're just wanting to make sure that everything is up to date and it's ready to go every year by August. And we've had the conversations with Food Service and, and, uh, others. Uh, Ms. Velasquez has been instrumental in all that, too. And, um, everybody is in agreement that it's a doable task and one that needs to happen. So, uh, it's, it is an update based on, uh, a few changes that needed to happen and community comment and, and, uh, some known issues, so.
Thanks for the clarification. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Compensation Equity Committee Report, Mr. Conway?
Yes, um, the Equity, uh, Compensation Equity Committee, we're finishing up our work. Um, I'm going to, um, ask, uh, we just have, we, I, I'm gonna ask to, um, get on, be part of the, uh, F and O agenda for our next meeting to, uh, get this discussion going, to see if we could, um, move on with our recommendations. Um, and, you know, the, um, paraprofessionals, they, they, they have a, they have a short presentation that they, they want to do, and, um, I think we're getting ready to, uh, close off this, this equity stuff. So, um, you know, we, we do have, um, a proposal in the making, and I'm, it'll, it'll be ready to, uh, be presented to, um, as a start, uh, F and O on Monday. And our work is, hopefully, hopefully, we're wrapping this up, and, you know, we'll get a decision one way or another. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Citywide School Building Committee Report, Mr. Wilcox?
Uh, very brief. Our next meeting is this coming Thursday at four thirty. Uh, agenda is posted, and the additional materials will be posted, um, I believe, tomorrow or on Wednesday, and that will include the building stewardship report, which is a rundown of some of the major projects. So invite everybody to take a look. And, uh, as I said, the meeting is this Thursday.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. And see no further discussion. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
For a second. Mr. Conway?
My second.
Okay, so we'll vote on the adjournment. Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson? Dr. Jackson?
Yes, yes, yes.
Mr. Goldson?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
And I am a yes.